The June 12th meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council will now come to order. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Prior to the start of each city council meeting, we have an open podium opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address us on issues of city business. This portion of the meeting is typically from 6:30 to 6:55 in the council chambers. If you wish to speak at open podium, please contact the city manager's office at 949-8412 by noon of the meeting date with your name, your phone number, and the subject matter you wish to discuss. If time permits, after scheduled speakers are finished, the mayor will open the floor to scheduled speakers. This portion of the meeting is not televised or recorded. Again, if you have any questions about it, please contact the city manager's office. The first item that we have on the agenda tonight is a great award that our Communications Department won. Mr. Getcho, do you want to go into that?
Absolutely, Mayor and City Council. Our first presentation tonight is an award that we have here from Carolyn Marinin, the Hennepin County Public Relations Officer, and our own communications manager, Joyce Lorenz.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. Thank you for having me. As you said, I am Carolyn Marinin. I am the Chief Public Relations Officer for Hennepin County. I'm also the president of the Minnesota Association of Government Communicators. So before I give out the hardware, a little background, we are a peer organization of professionals who are dedicated to improving public sector communications. We're here to help residents. I want to look back at them. We're here for them. We're very passionate about the work we do. We think communication is a two-way street, and we think when residents are engaged, they are better residents for it. So we're very proud of the work we do, and we try to be very transparent and use a lot of great tactics like social media, video, all the things you would assume. And when the stories aren't so great, we're there too because we have to be accountable to residents. So we've been around for nearly 40 years, which is a testament to this organization. We are nearly 300 members strong, and these are professional communicators or communicators who do work in other areas, but that's the second hat they wear. And we are from the city, from the county, from the state, from the federal government, from school districts. And so we put on a lot of thought-provoking workshops, and we try to help each other with best practices and learning from one another, and we are kind of a peer network. So we do a lot of great things for us and for others, I hope. And one of the things we do is we have an awards competition. So it's to honor the outstanding work that professional communicators do across the state of Minnesota. And it's called the Northern Lights Awards Contest, and it recognizes the best of the best. I'm looking at Joyce. And just to know, so you know how objective this is, we had, the judges were from Texas. They talked a little different, but they are still really good communicators. They say "y'all," but they are great communicators, and they were the judges for us, so we know it was incredibly objective. This year was the most competitive we've ever had historically. It was unprecedented in the number of entries. We had 179 entries. So that's why I'm here tonight, because I'm very excited to say the City of Eden Prairie won the Northern Lights Award first place for the redesigned Life in the Prairie in the newsletter category. In addition, here is this beautiful award. In addition, Life in the Prairie was named the 2018 Best of Show, the top award granted to a single entry that demonstrates effective government communications. Eden Prairie's entry was one of only three nominated for Best of Show, competing against -- I might have a drum roll here now, but Minneapolis and St. Paul. So you won. Woo! All right. So I'm a little nervous if there are people watching from Minneapolis and St. Paul, but okay. So on behalf of the MHC board and all of its members, I am honored to present to you the Best of Show Award to Communications Manager Joyce Lorenz, her team, and to the City of Eden Prairie. I'll probably give it to you now. I would also be remiss, I want sincere, sincere, sincere special thanks to you, Madam Mayor, to your council members, to all those who are elected, to understand how critical communications is. Thank you. Head and bobs are good, too. It's truly appreciated by us. It is not a loss on us as we do our day-in and day-out work, night and day. We're on 24/7. I put my phone on quiet for now. And so we thank you sincerely from the bottom of our hearts, and we are so proud to have you as our member in MHC. So thank you so very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much for this award, and it really always has been a real priority of this council for us to have good communications with our citizens. And obviously, it's not just Life in the Prairie, it's communicating through a number of avenues. So we really appreciate this award and the great work that you and your department have done, Joyce. Just outstanding to have that many nominations and to come out and talk. It's fabulous. You have something to say?
I do.
Okay. You're communicating.
Communicate.
I'm communicating. So on behalf of my team members, the Communications Division, I'd really like to thank City Manager Rick Getcho. He is always open to doing things differently and provides great input along the way. And after publishing six of these newsletters, we have yet to receive one negative comment, which is shocking.
Yeah.
So we're really, really proud of this award. I was telling Carolyn outside, I think this is kind of a once-in-a-lifetime kind of award. I would be shocked if we ever got Best of Show again, so we are going to revel in it as much as possible.
We need a banner.
Thank you, Joyce. Thank you for all your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. The next item tonight, this is exciting. Tonight we have the official graduation for our City Government Academy. Mr. Getcho, we're going to go down and do a graduation ceremony.
You are. You are. I've got a little introduction as you folks head down and you bring the diplomas with you as council members, and I'll join you in a second. On the last, I want to mention on the last item, though, too, while you go down with the award. So communications usually takes pictures of the other award winners. So when communications wins an award, our Park and Rec Director takes pictures. So I kind of like that. I don't know if he's going to keep that job or not. But yes, look at this. I look at the first couple rows out there, and I see some proud Eden Prairie graduates out in the front row. I know we don't have all 25 members of the class of 2018, but on almost each and every academy night, we had 23, 24 of our 25 members. And I want to mention, Mayor and council members, that this year, you as a council implemented a new program. It was, it's called the City Government Academy. And in the past, we've had police academies and senior police academies where residents of Eden Prairie could get behind the scenes over a several-week period of our police department. But what's new in what we started this spring was a citywide academy. And that was six weeks behind the scenes of each and every department of the city, Public Works, Parks and Recreation, Administration, Mayor Council, Form of Government, Community Development, Police and Fire. So you're looking at about 25 people that committed close to 20 hours of their own time this spring to learn a little bit more about Eden Prairie and Eden Prairie operations and behind the scenes at Eden Prairie. So following graduation, I know a few of them have a few words to say. And before I come down and say the names and the council gives the diplomas, I have two quick thank-yous as well. The first thank you is to Southwest Transit. Southwest Transit provided their, one of their large buses at no cost to help move us all around over the course of the academy, and they continue to be an awesome partner. They have partnered with the city on numerous events, and this is another new event where they stepped up and helped out. The other thank you is to the woman that just passed through. Her name is Lori Kearns. Lori Kearns works in Human Resources, and she, basically, you guys know, ran this whole thing, did she not? Yeah. So Lori did help with recruitment, bringing everybody on board, and helping work with each department to manage each and every single night, and she was here for every minute of every night. So Lori, great job. She's even working on her slideshow right now for graduation. So with that, Mayor, I'm going to come down, and we are going to present our diplomas to our graduates.
And when Rick gives the name, if you could come over to Kathy first, Councilmember Nelson, and pick up a pen, and then come down. We all want to shake your hands, and I will give you your diploma. It'll give me a little extra time to make sure I can find your diploma in this pile.
So they should be in order, Mayor. So when I call the name, it should be in the order of the diploma. And I think, not yet. Okay, so we're going to move on to the second person, but we're going to start with Lori Tretz. Lori Tretz. Next, we have Patricia Andricken. Christine Brinkman. Next, we have Joel Kaza. Joel. Joel's going to be opening up a pup-and-go restaurant in Eden Prairie. Hello, this is Pedro. Pedro Curry. And Udara Curry. Next graduate, brought his whole family here for graduation, it looks like, Patrick Donahue. Next, we have Sandra Dorn. Sandra Dorn. Our next graduate is Daniel Dorson. Next, we have Rod Fisher. Don't forget that. Next graduate is Christine Gulken. Next, we have Jeffrey Gerst. Next graduate is Anil Goll. Kyle Hall. I always told Kyle I really liked his glasses. Anjali Lemay. Next, we have Kristi Ann Schultz. Next graduate is Steve Smith. Next graduate is Gary Spears. A few more to go. Wendy Vogland. Next graduate is Sandy Williams. Our next graduate is Elizabeth York. And there were, and lastly, I think we have here, I know there were a few people not here, he almost didn't graduate, but he made it. He made it. He did it. Norman York. Norman York. And yeah, and we, there were three more that couldn't make it tonight. Kimmy Kimberling, Jason Rice, and Alex Terry were your classmates. And again, it was a great experience. I know there were, there were a few of you that wanted to maybe take a 30 seconds or so, as the council and I work our way back up, to share a couple reflections. And then graduation is complete, and I know you have a cake and a class picture following your time here in the council chambers. So I can't remember, Lori, who was coming up?
Yes, we have Jeffrey Gerst, Pedro Curry, and Kristi Ann Schultz that would like to say a few words.
All right, well, I've just been given 30 to 60 seconds, and I don't know which way to face for this, but on behalf of the class, I'd like to thank everybody who made the class possible. So thank you very much, Mayor, Council, for approving this, I'm assuming, line item in the budget, or whatever magic you worked for this. I'd also like to thank Lori and everybody who helped to make each week just so fantastic. You know, Money Magazine has consistently ranked Eden Prairie a wonderful place to live, and we, the first 25 people in this academy, are the ones that first got to kind of take a peek behind the scenes to see, you know, how the sausage is made. We got to peek behind the curtain to see all of the people who work so hard every day of the year to make Eden Prairie so fantastic. And we did give up, you know, six nights to do it, and I think it's a reflection on how well-run it was, that at the end of every night, everybody was smiling, really excited to find out what we were going to be doing next week, and I think wouldn't have been disappointed to find out that there were a seventh night that we hadn't been told about. It was all really fantastic, so just thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I just have to say that Jeff here gave up the opportunity to spend some time with a Twins player just to come to the last evening. So, yes, so very dedicated student. So I have like 30 seconds here. So within the six weeks, I not only broadened my knowledge of this great city, but reinforced my love and commitment to this great metropolis dwelling that is so finnily called Eden Prairie. The expansive experiences that were taught by each department, administration, city council, fire and city codes, housing and development, maintenance, water treatment, police and safety, and parks and recreation, all provided me with a deeper respect and commitment to my 20 years of residency in this great place. My children have grown up in Eden Prairie and have embedded their foundation in, and learning within some of our top school districts in the state. And that being said, I've invested many hours in classroom volunteering and ballfields, but have not had the time to root myself into a more in-depth learning experience about the city in which I lived. So this gave me the opportunity to do so. And as my son was nearing the end of his education this year in Eden Prairie High School, I felt that it was time to reach out and become more involved at the government level and learning with the expectation of finding a way to serve and minister to my community. And through this experience, I'm looking forward to dedicating my body and soul to this fantastic city by applying to serve in the Eden Prairie Fire Department when an opening arises. So Chief Espenson has been so gracious to allow me to have three ride-alongs already, and has, they have just a fantastic group, but I hope I have what it takes. So thank you for investing in me and providing the opportunity to learn and fortify what I've already known that this great city of Eden Prairie is run by an outstanding group of individuals. So thank you.
Thank you.
So good evening, everyone, city officials, council members, Mayor, Madam Mayor. Thank you. Lori asked me to speak in between 30 to 60 seconds, and I told her that that was going to be a challenge. I am laughing. I can speak all night, but I'm going to try to keep it within that. The first thing that I want to say is thank you for allowing me to participate in this first City of Eden Prairie Government Academy. It has been simply fantastic, I think. Every single thing was well-mounted, every session was really, really good. We have wonderful classmates. I want to mention my wife and all those classmates there. And I think it just showed the commitment that every single person that works for the city and the administrators and the elected members of the council have for this city. One of the reasons that I want to thank you so much is because when I took my oath to become a U.S. citizen some time ago, I made a promise to get involved in the, in the community. And this has been the opportunity for me to start making that involvement true, truly become a reality. And I think one of the things that I like is not only the information that we got and the insight that we get into knowing how to manage what it seems a simple city, that we understand that is a very complex way to actually manage a city such as beautiful, such as the one that we have. So it has really ignited in myself that desire to actually become not only a better resident myself, but become a better partner for my residents and to become a better partner for the officials that run our cities. So come with me, too. I am considered in volunteering in several of the committees. I haven't chosen one. I have started by becoming an electoral judge. I want to participate in that one, too. I know that there is a lot of people that need it. But again, I think that it should be like 55 seconds, Lori, so thank you. Thank you, everyone, and your classmates.
Well, I would just like to say, it certainly sounds like we batted 1,000 on this one. We've been wanting to do something like this for so long, and fortunately, we have the staff and the city manager and the resources within the community to finally get around to doing this. And I think it's very interesting, because from the three speakers that we heard, I'm hearing this love for the community that all of us on the council have developed after serving as your elected representatives to this board. And it really warms my heart that you guys feel that same way now. When you came up and received your diplomas, you heard several words repeatedly from us. One was congratulations, and the other one was thank you. And really, thank you so much for being willing to do this. Thank you to your families for helping you to give up the time in the evening so that you could attend these events. But this is just wonderful for us, because there are only five of us that are elected up here. But you all can, can go into the community and spread the word about what we're doing, answer questions that your neighbors have, let us know. I mean, you've gotten to know different staff people, you can let them know what you're hearing from community members. So you're kind of like the ears and the eyes on the ground for us, and you're the first group, and I hope that you let your friends and neighbors know how much you enjoyed it and that we have even more applicants for, is it going to be next year's class or every two years?
Every year, Mayor, and I think we already have a pretty close-to-full class for next year.
Oh, my goodness. Okay.
And we, and the last thing I'll mention is we do have alumni events, so you guys will be able to get together again.
Yeah. But we hope that it instilled in you a desire to, like Pedro said, be an election judge, like you said, be a firefighter, run for city office, volunteer for a commission or a task force. Just the more people that we have as advocates for local government is really helpful. And I know that survey after survey shows that people are so disillusioned with state and federal government, and really, local government is where we make things happen. And I think there's greater trust in local government and greater connectivity between elected officials and, and the residents of the community. So thank you very much for being a part of that. So if you want to get up and go out for your pictures and your refreshments, that would be great. We'll pause a little bit here. Thanks again.
Were you told that you now have, though, to attend the next five years of council members' meetings? Mandatory, so you can make it back up with your cake.
I'm just jealous. I wish we would have had this when we were first elected. It would have been fabulous.
Right. All right. Is there a motion for approval of the agenda and other items of business?
Move approval?
Second.
Anything to add? Councilmember Nelson, you wanted to do councilmember report?
Yes, just a short one.
Okay.
I also have a councilmember report.
Okay. All right. All in favor of the agenda as amended?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the council workshop on Tuesday, May 15?
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the city council meeting held the same date?
Move approval?
Second.
Any items to correct there? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. That brings us to the consent calendar. We have items A through S. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Any items to pull for discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. First public hearing, Mr. Carwash. Mr. Getcho. First and only public hearing.
That's right. Mr. Getcho will talk about Mr. Carwash. No, you, you got it right. You're right. Yes, our one public hearing, Mayor, is a proposal for some building and landscaping and site improvements for
and site improvements for Mr. Carwash. And this is a site plan recommendation. It is not requesting any waivers at all. So, this is a site plan proposal that is coming straight to the city council that did not need to come through the planning commission. And it's my understanding that Mr. Carwash is here to provide an overview and a presentation of the work that you'll be doing, that they will be doing. The, I think, all the plans you have, council has, and the schematics, but Mr. Carwash will provide an overview of some of the work that they have planned.
Thank you. So, is this Mr. Wash?
Good evening, Your Honor and members of the council. My name is Ben Potachek with DJR Architecture, and this is Brian Guenling, joining me with Mr. Carwash. And we have a PowerPoint.
There it is.
There. Okay. So, we are proposing improvements to the exterior and site of the Mr. Carwash at 8280 Flying Cloud Drive, which is at the intersection of Flying Cloud and Middle Set Road. Mr. Carwash would like to make these improvements to have a refresh for the building, to make it more attractive to customers, and also for the whole community. Shown on the first slide is the existing condition. It's a relatively low building. There is a brick base with currently a red metal fascia. Originally built in 1984, there's been one addition, and I believe that fascia has changed paint colors throughout the years. At the northeast end, there is some mechanical equipment that is, the parapet's raised at that corner to screen that mechanical equipment, and we will be maintaining that. There were some site improvements made this past winter, and those improvements were approved internally, or administratively, by staff, because they're minor, and they involved rearranging the drivelanes. So, we went from one driveline to two to access the car wash. This is an express car wash, which means customers don't leave their cars. There is automatic pay box outside, so they use that before they enter, and then they enter the car wash. They don't leave their car. There's no interior customer space for them. And this site is ZONE C-REG Service, Regional Service District. So, I'll briefly go through the changes to the elevations. We are not proposing to add any square footage to the building, so this is primarily an exterior remodel. So, the materials that we are using are a longboard screen wall, which is an aluminum panel with a wood look, and we're using that to accentuate the corners over the existing mechanical screening, and then matching that on the other corner so that it's symmetrical. Some other Class 1 materials that we're adding are cultured stone and a thin brick, and those will replace the existing metal fascia to move this in the direction of more Class 1 materials. This elevation, which faces Flying Cloud, will go from what was 61% Class 1 materials, which includes brick, stone, glass, and that will comply now with 75% Class 1 materials. At the southwest elevation around the corner, I just want to point out that we will be adding steel canopies that will be painted blue over, this is the exit to the car wash, to accentuate entrances and exits of the building. And this will go from 52% Class 1 materials to 78%. This would probably be considered the back of the building, opposite of Flying Cloud. We will continue the same materials that we're using in the front, except for the longboard. So, we'll have cultured stone, thin brick. We will keep the existing brick at the base, and also there are two overhead doors that are operationally no longer needed. So, we'll be infilling those with brick to match what's existing. On the backside, probably most dramatically, we're increasing the Class 1 materials from 38% to 87%. And then, finally, at the northeast elevation, again, we're continuing the materials and adding a canopy over the entrance to the Carwash building, and going from 48% to 75% Class 1 materials. Here are some renderings that show the look and feel of the improvements. In addition to the exterior improvements, we are adding new landscaping to the site, and that landscaping will include native species and also color variation throughout the seasons. And the bulk of that landscaping is along Flying Cloud Drive. We'll also be relocating an existing freestanding sign out of the utility and drainage easement, and making that comply, and surrounding that with landscaping as well. And then, we just also wanted to note that we kept the Eden Prairie design guidelines in mind while we were designing these improvements. We wanted to be consistent with those guidelines. Some of those include having the architectural features at the corners, the pilasters and banding, and the masonry, the change in variation in roofline, building depth, and change in materials throughout the building. We did what we could to work with staff and listen to their recommendations, to not only comply with city ordinance, but meet the guidelines. And then, lastly, we wanted to include some sustainability items, one being the native plantings for the landscaping. Another, we'll be replacing the exterior lighting with all LED lighting fixtures for energy conservation. And then, we'll continue to allow the employees of the Carwash to secure their bikes inside the building. And we won't necessarily have customers using bikes, because they'll be riding bikes.
That's right. Don't need a scary bike story.
So, at this time, do you have any questions for myself or Brian?
Looks really nice. Councilmember Butcher-Wickstrom.
Yes, well, first of all, I wanted to say, I think these improvements are fantastic. Really, a high level of aesthetic. Going to make a terrific new look for you there. And you'll be, I think, more visible, you know, coming on Flying Cloud, which obviously is one of the reasons you wanted to do it. But, I do have two things I have to ask you about. One, one thing that has concerned me is when you exit the Carwash at the very end of your washing that goes on, there are folks that are turning off of Flying Cloud Drive onto Middle Set Road. And I know sometimes it gets kind of confusing, like, should you go out? And so, that was something I've been a little concerned about. I don't know, I mean, obviously, you can't add any greater distance to the, you know, to the exit area. But, is there anything, I mean, have you thought about that? So, that's one thing I just wanted to ask about, but I've got another thing, too. And one thing that also happens is that, and I don't know if it's our road, or if it's, so, because of the water leaving the Carwash, that road gets kind of washboard, do you know what I'm talking about, as you are exiting onto Middle Set, taking a right to get onto Flying Cloud. So, that was something else that just worried me a little bit. And then, the other thing that I have thought about is, as you exit, you have a two-light meter there. I think it's green and yellow, or is it, is it green and yellow, or red and yellow?
Green and yellow.
Yeah, because it's sometimes difficult to know if you should go, or are you going to get a little more, you know, air on that car to get the drops off? So, that was, I mean, I've seen them where they're, I think they're, they're green and red, so you know to stop, or you know to go. But, but maybe you haven't done it because of the, you know, people turning on the Middle Set, and you don't want them to think that it's okay to go at that time, if you understand what I mean. Does that make any sense at all to you? Okay. Those are my questions.
Okay. I can try to address them. Let me make sure I remember them all. The first one was the exit onto Middle Set, correct?
Correct.
Okay. We, we've noticed that, too. We've also noticed that the majority of our customers actually pull into the vacuum area, because there is a vacuum area that, where we don't provide the service ourselves to the customer, but we offer the vacuums to them, that they're welcome to use afterwards. So, a lot of our customers, we notice, go through there, and that helps to help alleviate just everybody getting pushed right out on the Middle Set right there as they exit, and that helps that a bit. But, we can look into that, see if there's something else that we can do there.
You know, I know, wouldn't it be great if there were, like, signage that sort of points you to the right, so that, you know, you could go down a little further instead of, you know, running onto traffic that's coming on the Middle Set? But, I think people really like going on Middle Set, so they can get, take that right onto Flying Cloud Drive. So, that throws a little complication in. But, I appreciate you taking a look at that. That would be very helpful.
We will be submitting a signage package that's separate from the design here, the remodel. That will be coming at a later date. And so, we'll, I'll let our marketing team know that, excuse me, to look into maybe adding something like that, that says, you know, exit over here as well. Your other question was in regards to the water kind of pooling up at the exit into the tunnel. When I was there on site just a couple weeks ago, we had actually discussed maybe adding an additional catch basin right there as you leave the tunnel, and maybe adding some channels to catch that and force that back into the building. So, we're going to be doing that little improvement, because there's kind of some broken asphalt, like you had mentioned, right there, where it's all pooling. We're going to fix that as we do this project.
Excellent idea. Thank you for that. How about the third?
Did you have a third question?
Well, no, I had that last one about the light. Is there...
I can look into that, too, because we have, we do have the light, whether it's, some stores, yellow and green, some of them are red and green. But, let me look at that exact location and see if the timing is proper, because the yellow should make sure that you're not leaving until after you're as thoroughly dried as possible.
Right.
And then, the green comes on, which, again, that kind of helps to alleviate how many people are getting pushed out onto Middle Set. So, let me double-check to make sure that the machine is timed properly.
Yeah. Okay. Councilmember Case.
So, I think I'm allowed to say this, that this is my Carwash of choice, but since we're diluted in our vote here, I think I'm not favoring anyone. I just happen to frequent your establishment. And I also find that the yellow-green works well, that if you just wait until the thing turns green, it's, the timing's right. But, I, you check that out, but I've not had an issue there. My question really is with staff, and really, to you, Mr. Getcho. And I've asked this question before, and it's kind of minor, but there's a bigger issue involved. I just am always curious, what is it that triggers something coming before? Because you already said there were all those changes out to the front, which, by the way, we can talk offline, or it's still a little bit confusing which lane I get into. But, so, all those changes occurred without our approval whatsoever, and that must have been a small percentage of something. And then, other buildings will paint their color a different color. It doesn't trigger anything. So, if I did my math right here, most of these exterior sides moved from about, you know, 50% Class 1 materials to 70%. That's a pretty small increase. And I just, I'm just curious, and I'm glad this is coming before. So, by the way, I'm thrilled with the project, and I think it's fantastic, and I appreciate the opportunity to weigh in on projects like this. I'm just more curious, when, what are we not seeing, you know? So, what is it that triggers it comes to us? And when does it not rise to the level of being triggered to come to us? Why do we get some and not others? Why did we get this one? That's really what I'm asking.
So, I'll do the bigger overview, and maybe Janet can step in, that there is a minimum amount of improvements that can be done that would not go past the front counter at City Hall. Then, there are...
Dollar amount?
Percentage of change?
No, I think it might be a percentage, or, yeah.
That makes sense, by the way.
And I'll let Janet weigh in on that. Then, and this is an update for you, that there are more moderate improvements past a certain threshold, that we actually updated our city code, I think it was five or six years ago, so it doesn't have to go through the entire process and come straight to you tonight. And that's where this fits. And we actually streamlined projects such as this to bring straight to you. And then, you get to the more major improvements, and that's the full planning commission and city council.
UD changes or something, right, right.
Yeah, and it might be the amount of work done on the building, or the percentage. I can let Janet weigh in. But, there was a time when it was either the whole full process, planning commission hearings and city council, or not. And this is that new middle ground we created, where it's enough to where we think, you know, a certain amount, where the elected officials are going to say, this is quite a bit of improvement to the site, the landscaping, the facade, the materials, design standards that you would want to weigh in on. But, the exact threshold itself, from that update, I think, in 2012 or 13, Janet may have.
Thank you, Janet. Just to say, I'm glad I asked the question, because I think this is clarity, and maybe I should have known that already. But, I appreciate knowing that there's that third middle area now, and that this, this is a living example of that. So, thank you.
Yep.
Your Honor, Councilmember Casey, I think Mr. Getcho explained it really well with regard to the three layers, and this one's in the middle. If they had been actually expanding their building, then it would go to planning commission, or major changes to the parking lot. Really, the main pieces of the circulation and the building footprint and everything are remaining the same, so it didn't rise to planning commission. And with regard to the council review, the design guidelines were kind of new. We were working through things, project by project. So, there was some interest at the time in seeing these facade remodels, and there's been some interest even in landscaping and making sure we're doing what we can with bicycle facilities, et cetera. But, if the council gets comfortable with the staff decisions, we can certainly look at putting more things into the administrative category. That was really, you know, just at the time, what everyone was comfortable with.
Right now, I do like seeing these projects. It is, I was thinking the same thing, that it's nice to see what the design standards have done to the redevelopment here, and to see how sustainability issues are stressed.
Right, and when things start changing, you'll know what's happening as well, and you'll be familiar with it if you get questions. It is a very visible site.
Councilmember Nelson, did you have your...
I just wanted to say thank you for doing the upgrading of your property to make it look better, to adding the landscaping, the LED lighting and such. I think that makes a big difference to the whole business community, as businesses do that, and we appreciate it, and hopefully, it adds to your business as well. But, it is the kind of steps that we enjoy seeing.
Thank you. Councilmember Aho.
I was just going to add the same thing, but everyone's already said it so well. But, I just, we really do appreciate what you're doing, and thanks for looking at our standards, reviewing them thoughtfully, and really seeing how they fit into the project, and incorporating them in. So, we do appreciate that, and excellent work, and we're really looking forward to seeing a new, a new look to Mr. Carwash. So, thank you.
So, when do you anticipate this would start? And how long will you be shut down for? Just a portion of the time?
We've done similar projects over in Adina, and currently doing one over in St. Louis Park, and St. Paul as well. The exterior reimaging takes about 45 to 60 days typically. This one is a little bit bigger than those. We're hoping to kind of keep it in that same timeframe, though.
Okay.
But, hopefully, we can kick this off by mid-August, so we can fit it in by the end of the year before winter sets in.
And will you have to shut down at all?
There'll be days where we have to shut down, while we're doing work over the entrance or exit in.
Yeah.
But, we're going to try to minimize that, because we are an open business, and we want to, you know, keep our customers happy, and keep things moving as well.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on the Mr. Carwash remodel?
Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing and direct staff to prepare a development agreement incorporating staff recommendations and council conditions.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Congratulations. It's a beautiful project. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is payment of claims. Is there a motion for approval?
Move approval?
Second.
Any items to question? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Aho?
Aye.
Councilmember Butcher-Wickstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Case?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Tyrell Lukeins?
Aye. The next item is consideration of a moratorium for adult-use establishments, gun sales, and pawn shops. Mr. Getcho?
I'll turn this over to the city attorney, Mayor.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, at the last workshop, the council received a presentation from staff about these particular three uses, because there had been interest shown by council members in terms of what regulations the city had with respect to those retail uses, adult-use businesses, firearm sales, dealer shops, and pawn shops. And as a result of that workshop discussion, I was asked to prepare an ordinance that is called an interim ordinance, that imposes a moratorium on any new establishment of a type that is subject to the ordinance, from being constructed, established, a land use changed for that use, for a period of up to 12 months, so long as the council at the same time authorizes a study of what would be appropriate, if anything, with respect to changes in the city code. And so, what you have before you in the packet tonight is an ordinance that does that. It is accompanied by the typical summary ordinance and resolution ordering the summary, which is a procedural... which is a procedural matter, so you don't have to, those are procedural documents. The substance of it is in the ordinance. And then there's a resolution that orders a study with respect to each one of those. Now, having listened closely to the conversations at both meetings, this is not a ban on any business establishing in the community. In fact, if I didn't say it at the meeting several months ago where I, where you asked me to address what the city's authority was with respect, for instance, to firearm dealers, the city cannot zone out any legal use. And this all emanates from the mobile home cases back in the 50s and 60s, that you have to allow any legal use in area within your community for that. But you are allowed to zone and to separate uses and you do that all the time. We have industrial, commercial, residential buffer zones between those uses. In today's day and age, there is more mixed-use development going on, a more urban feel to development that encourages walkability and all the policies you have around that. So, that's the ordinance you have before you tonight. It's set up for a first and second reading. First and second reading requires a unanimous vote of the council to pass the second reading portion of that. So, if a motion to approve the ordinance that's in the agenda is approved 3, 2, 4, 1, it would need to come back for a second reading at your next council meeting. And the resolution then ordering the study would be delayed until that second reading, at which point then no one's bound by the first vote they made. You can vote at the second reading however you wish. In discussing this ordinance, even today, I thought it was important perhaps to prepare some options for the council that would avoid convoluted motions to withdraw a particular use, in particular the firearm, regulations from the ordinance and to separate that out. And so, I want to be upfront with you, I have those prepared. So, I have, let me describe what I have, so not to direct your conversation or what you should do, but to tell you what's available for, for you to do. I have, we have the ordinance in the packet for all three uses, first and second reading. And I've described what happens. I also have an ordinance prepared for a first and second reading addressing adult use businesses and pawn shops, along with a resolution that orders a study with respect to those two uses. So, that could be passed, those two uses could be passed if there was a unanimous vote for the ordinance in, at tonight's meeting. And then I have a standalone ordinance for the firearm dealers that is set up, quite frankly, for a first reading. That if you, if you wish to go that route, you can say, we don't want to do any of those alternatives, or we want to do one of them and not another. It's all up to you. But the, the purpose again is not to direct the conversation, but I was imagining, okay, if someone wanted to pull out one aspect of it, there were so many areas in the ordinance where you had to do it, it would be difficult to, on the fly, fashion the motion that would be articulate to do that. And so, I have those documents prepared for you. And perfectly fine to ask any questions you have with respect to those alternatives, but I trust you have some discussion of your own about what you want to do.
Right. First, are there any questions for Mr. Russell? Okay, I'd like to open it up to council members for comments. Councilmember Nelson?
Um, we've talked before about the possibility of doing this in these categories and having them so far away from schools and churches and such. At this point, I don't believe we have pawn shops or adult use. We had an adult use that closed. But I'd also like to point out that our current gun shops have chosen well, as they are exactly in the areas where they would be allowed to be. They obviously recognize these areas as a great place to do business. And I commend them for it. And they are doing good business in these areas. But I think there are good areas to do business with any of these. And there are some other areas that we would like to have different distances from homes and daycares and churches. I think a lot of areas have done that. But I don't think this affects any given business at this point. And I, I think it's a good thing for us to look at, to have some time to figure out everything with the moratorium on this. And, and I'm very comfortable with it, especially since it's where the current gun shops have chosen to be, is where they're allowed to be. It tells me it's the right spots.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Aho.
So, I'd just like to say that, you know, Eden Prairie is really a first-class, award-winning city. We, we have many high-quality businesses and, and just the residents of Eden Prairie are fantastic. I'm very much interested in keeping Eden Prairie a premier city that is really safe and, and first-rate in every aspect. And I agree, we need to study our planning and ordinances when it comes to certain business uses. It's really clear from many studies that adult use and establishments are detrimental to the health and welfare of a community. And really, since our current ordinances don't cover this type of business, it's really critical that we study how to handle possible future businesses of this type, even though we haven't, I don't, to my knowledge, I don't think we've had any requests for an adult use establishment in Eden Prairie. Pawn shops are currently already defined in our city code and we do have some regulations placed on this type of business, which I believe is necessary and it's a good idea. Again, we currently don't have any of this type of businesses in Eden Prairie, other than jewelry stores, which are permitted to purchase used gold. However, we do have regulations on that type of activity, even though they aren't pawn shops, and they do have to be licensed. So, I do agree that the city should study what type of regulations and zoning would best control this type of business operating in our city. As far as licensed firearm dealer stores, I think those are really a different, different group from the other two businesses addressed in this proposed moratorium. And there's really no evidence that suggests that the presence of a retail store selling firearms reduces the safety of a surrounding community or reduces the property values. And we really don't have to spend any time and money on, money on a study of that because we can already see the results, because we've had a number of retailers in Eden Prairie selling firearms for a long time. And those, those retailers are very much regulated by federal and state laws already. There's many laws on that. As we know, the city is unable to regulate the sale of firearms and ammunition and other accessories. So, currently, we have three retailers that sell firearms in our city, with one that is exclusively a firearm dealer store and the other's selling many, many other sporting goods as well. We also have Shields, which will be selling firearms as part of their product line when they open. These businesses really are, are very reputable organizations and, and I know we've, we've all had comments and heard comments on how nice the, the stores are. And they, they really provide a valuable service to their customers and they're really not some type of illegitimate or shady operation. Our firearm dealers are very careful to follow all the many laws that they face, large penalties and fines, or they could lose their license if they fail to follow those ordinances and laws. And I've personally spoken with many of them and they are careful, as we heard tonight, they are very careful not to sell to anyone that they are not comfortable with because the, frankly, the last thing any of them want is to have, sell to someone who intends to harm themselves or others. So, I realize that it's not the intent of this, this proposed action tonight to, to include firearm dealers and, and relate them to sex shops and pawn brokers. But I do think it is offensive to the businesses that operate in, in our city to put them in the same group when you're, when you're looking at this study and this moratorium. And really, what the city staff's review of this issue, they only found that one other city in our surrounding community had any zoning regarding firearm dealers, and that was the city of Richfield. So, again, there is no evidence to support that any notion of these establishments degrade the community or reduce the safety or surrounding area. And I visited Gander Outdoors this past weekend and just my observation was that many families with children of all ages were enjoying the store, shopping throughout the store, including the second floor area where firearms are sold. None of them appeared to be afraid or worried that firearms are located and sold there. And by including firearm dealers with adult use establishments and pawn shops, I think we're really sending the wrong message that they are not welcome in our community. And I don't agree with that. For example, should we also expand the group of businesses that we want to study to massage therapists, tattoo parlors and liquor stores? Because other cities certainly regulate those types of businesses, but in this moratorium, we're not including them. I'd also like to note that there's many people here tonight at the meeting that are opposed to this ordinance and if it includes the firearm dealer stores. And many of them are from Eden Prairie and also many of them have come a long way to show their opposition to this moratorium, although they're not, we're not taking public input on this. So, again, none of us would argue against studying and regulating adult use establishments in Eden Prairie. And I'm certainly not opposed to studying possible zoning recommendations for firearm dealer stores, but I am opposed to placing a moratorium on them along with adult use establishments and pawn shops. And I would personally recommend that we remove them from the proposed moratorium. And frankly, I don't think that we're going to see any, any new stores, firearm stores proposed for Eden Prairie. We're going to have quite a few already. I, I really doubt that there is much room for more competition in our city.
Thank you. Councilmember Butcher-Wickstrom.
Yes, so, I do support this ordinance, temporary ordinance, that includes all three of the businesses that we've been talking about. So, it does include the firearm dealers as well as pawn shops and adult use establishments. And I want to let you know, we have all received so many communications with our residents. And I have just the opposite, where I've received a lot of correspondence from residents who actually are concerned. They are concerned about firearms and how it impacts public health, safety and welfare. So, the other thing I want to say is that it is the purview of this council to gain information that assists this governing body in making the very best possible decisions on behalf of our residents. And I also want to make this clear that what we're talking about here is it merely authorizes studies to be completed in order for this council to have additional information and for us to understand any potential impacts of the surrounding businesses or surrounding properties based on the location of these three different businesses, types of businesses. So, I think after the research reports are in, the council has an opportunity to figure out if there are any impacts that would cause us to zone differently or not. So, I think this is a good way. We have talked about doing this before and I think we are a good city. And one of the reasons we are is that we are, we are good thinkers. We bring in lots of information so we can make the very best decisions possible. So, I think this is a very good temporary ordinance for up to 12 months.
Thank you. Councilmember Case.
So, I have agreement and probably some minor disagreements, but mostly agreements with much of what all three of you said. And I'd like to try to pull some of that together. I also have handwritten notes here. I'll try to work from, the, the first thing I really want to add is that, and I, and I know that Mr. Russell shared this and many of the correspondence, the emails I received seemed a little bit confused on this, but we never intended, as Mr. Russell said, we can't, we never intended to legally prevent nearly, as we can't, nearly any use from going somewhere in the city. What the city can do, as Mr. Russell said again, is to zone appropriately for the health and welfare of our residents. So, I mean, clearly, people, just to use a metaphor of having your, your house on your half-acre lot, you don't want a gas station to be put in right next door. And we, we have the ability as a city council, as we should, to prevent that. I, I think there was good reason initially in clumping the, these three concepts together, adult entertainment, pawn shops and gun stores or adult use, I guess, I know there's different terminology flying around. I, I think initially there's good reason to clump them together because there's, there are sensitivities and sensibilities that, that a large portion of our residents feel on either side of certain of those issues. And you don't get that division with a target. It's, there's no visceral positive, well, maybe, hopefully for Target, a positive reaction, but there's no visceral negative reaction. But, but you do get that with adult use or adult entertainment stores. You do get that with pawn shops. And like it or not, I mean, there are people that are very adamant gun-owning supporters, second amendment rights, people that get visceral positive reactions on seeing a large sign of guns sold here and they get excited. But there's, I, I don't know the percentage, but in America, it's a lot. Forty, 50% people that get a visceral negative reaction to that. Again, you don't get that with Target, you don't get that with Cub Foods, but you get that with guns. So, there, well, there was a reason initially in our thinking to look at, and I think the mayor, the mayor, I think you said this, that, maybe I did, but it was, it was a great idea, but I, I think you said it. I'll quote you, that we just don't want to get caught a couple of years down the road in having a gun store go and say to a mall up in the northwest Eden Prairie, there's a small mall section up there, or there's a section down by Franlow and Pioneer Trail, and, and suddenly having, you know, 300 neighbors come out and say, what were you all thinking? You know, and, and we just didn't want to be caught in that, that situation. So, we just began to think, do we want to address this like we would be addressing pawn shops or adult use entertainment? And it seemed to make sense that we can't and should not, not allow gun stores to be in the city, but maybe we should give some deep thought into where they should be allowed. I, I think, I think that makes sense. I, I think where I'm moving a little bit this evening is the idea that there's quite a bit of research available out across the nation, but on the internet, on adult use and adult entertainment stores. There, there's a lot of research and data and a lot of cities across the nation that have taken action on, on that type of establishment. So, a lot of case law on that. There's also a fair amount, maybe, you know, not as much, but a lot on pawn shops. There's very, very little data and research on zoning gun stores or firearms, zoning on where and how and when they should go. And there's just very, very little research on that issue. So, with that in mind, I, I really do support the idea of separating this out tonight. I'd like to see us act on, because I, I think we've got the five votes and I think we could move on the first and second reading. Well, I'm not sure, Brad, I'll, I'll leave it up to you. I'm not sure about the pawn shop. I was listening to what you said, but it seems like there might be five votes if we were to, to separate that out and do a moratorium. The moratorium would be for us really to investigate 500 feet, 1,000 feet, what does that mean? What does that look like? And, and getting back, I'm going to parenthetically put something back in here on the gun store concept. It's, it's, which I realize I'm only talking pawn shops right now and adult entertainment, but it's that idea that if, if, if a family's walking out of an elementary school or they're walking out of their daycare, do they want to walk out and see adult entertainment store? Do they want to walk out in that, like 100 feet from the front door of a school and see a pawn shop? Or a gun store? I mean, that, that's the same sensibility and sensitivities, I think, that are involved there, which gets back to why initially I think we were thinking, this is not a bad idea. But again, getting back to my research idea, I don't think there's good research on the gun store piece. So, I would like to see the moratorium on pawn shops and on adult use or adult entertainment. Am I saying it right? Probably not entertainment, adult use.
Adult use establishment.
Adult use establishments and pawn shops. I, I would support a moratorium giving us the chance as a city to investigate what other cities are doing, especially in the state of Minnesota, and, and figure out what's an appropriate 500,000-foot kind of a concept. Now, with firearms, here's what I'd like to see, and I think this would, it's not that I'm looking to be protected against future accusations, I want to represent the people of Eden Prairie well, and that means people that own guns and are concerned about Second Amendment, and concerned about their gun owning rights, and people who are very, very worried about our country today and the shootings, and, and the idea of being reminded by big signs of guns in the window. There are, there's a large percentage of that kind of person. I want to hear from everyone. And we have a city website, what's our page is called, where we collect data and information?
Connect.
City what?
Connect.
Connect? So I, I would, I would like to see, and I don't, I don't care how much time there is, I mean, we can do it for 30 days, we can do it for 60 days, but, but let's put the word out. I want to know, what do our residents feel about the comfort level of having a store selling firearms, you know, 100 feet from their home, 500 feet from their home, 1,000 feet from their home? Would they be concerned? Maybe we can be specific in our questions and point out certain malls. Would they be concerned about if a gun arms selling, firearm selling store came into this particular strip mall? We have several strip malls in the city that, that again, would be within several hundred feet of residential areas. Is that a problem? I want to, I want to collect that data, and I think, I think that would help us down the way as a council, and future councils, feel comfortable that they collected information, they collected data, they, we could even put it on our, craft the question correctly and figure out how to do that on a city survey. We could work to, to get this information. And I, I, like Brad, I'm not concerned in the short term about a gun store popping up if it, if it did, well, we know right now it's not in the pipeline, so I think we have several months at the very least, and, and probably likely more. So I'd like to gather data on that issue, and I'd like to have a council, us or a future council, readdress this. And I really want to find out from the people of Eden Prairie, what, what are their, what are their concerns, and what are their feelings about this, and what are their sensitivities? So that's my proposal tonight, to divide this out and take action on adult use establishments and pawn shops, and, and pass the ordinance to put a moratorium on that. And then move over and do data collecting on the firearm store, firearm sales, stores that sell firearms, and collect more information on that. And we could even design, have staff come back with a process, we could even put some timelines on it if that's what we wish, but that's my, that's my proposal.
Okay, thank you. I think we're all pretty clear that there's not a whole lot that we can do as a council about gun violence. We've heard that from our city attorney, we've heard that from all kinds of people and, and data, that there really isn't much that we can do as a council, except to make our voice heard, and make it apparent to the rest of the world that we're concerned about this. We've heard repeatedly from our students and our residents after these almost monthly horrific events that have occurred, how unsafe they feel, how they feel that there needs to be something done in our, in our country. It is the responsibility of our council to help residents to be safe. No one can tell Mr. Tate that he will never be in a situation like he was in in Las Vegas ever again. I'm sure if you hear a car backfire, you probably hit the, hit the pavement out of fear. I recently came back from the U.S. Conference of Mayors and sat with, at breakfast with the mayor of Parkland, Florida, who talked about the impact to her community of one of these horrific events. Her community does not feel safe anymore. The children in her community do not feel safe. I don't think our children feel safe. Two Parkland students that were at, is it Marjory Stoneman High School, addressed us and talked about what happened to them during the event, hiding in a closet with 60 students, hearing their classmates murdered. Something needs to be done, and I think it has to start with local communities. It's not going to start at any other level. I met with a gun seller, who's not in this room, who told me that the NRA is in favor of common sense approaches to dealing with access to guns. Yet, if you go on the NRA website and try to find out anything about their political platform on such things as denying weapons to people with mental health issues, there's nothing there. They actually say that the goal of common sense gun reform, they say this on their website, on a major page, that the goal of common sense gun reform is actually a full repeal of the Second Amendment and a ban on all guns. I don't think that's anything that you're hearing from all, any of the council members up here. None of us are in favor of a total ban on guns, we're not hearing that. But common sense reforms need to be made. We need to make our citizens feel safe within our community. I don't think Mr. Tate's going to be feeling real safe if a gun store goes in half a block from his home. I don't think our high school students would feel very safe if a gun store went in where Little Red is now. There are some common sense things that we can do in terms of zoning, allowing businesses that sell guns, which is legal, to have a place within our community that our citizens are comfortable with. So I, I'm kind of in favor of a moratorium, but I could go the way that you're talking, Mr. Case, of having some intensive data gathering so that we can make some zoning decisions, but I would want to do it pretty quickly. I'm hearing at this point that everybody's very comfortable with pulling out the adult use and the pawn shop moratorium as something separate, so why don't we take action on that first? Mr. Russell?
Yes, Your Honor, to, to address that again, I took the ordinance that was in the packet, took out the firearm dealers, took out all those references, and have the, the ordinance, the resolution prepared that way. There is one other change that was more of a judgment matter on my part. The ordinance says it does not affect any existing use. In Section 5, it talked about prohibiting enlargement and expansion, and on reflection, I struck that from these, this revised ordinance, because expansion is covered by our regular ordinances. A business can expand, and so we don't need the moratorium to affect expansion of an existing shop, because expansion is governed just by regular zoning regulations. So if you look at your motion on this item, to adopt what I have prepared for adult use establishments and pawn shops, you would read the same motion, but not read the words "fire dealer stores" or "firearm dealers" in the first and second bullet point on that item.
Okay. Thank you. Does somebody want to make that motion?
I will make it. I would move to approve the first and second reading of an interim ordinance temporarily prohibiting new adult use establishments and pawn shops, and approve a resolution authorizing studies to determine amendments necessary to the city code to protect public health, safety, welfare, and to provide for a sound planning related to adult use establishments and pawn shops, and adopt the resolution approving the publication of the summary ordinance.
Second, but since I don't have that right in front of me, what, what's the length of time, did you keep, length of time for the moratorium?
12 months. Everything else stayed the same as what was in the packet.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Councilmember Nelson?
Well, I do want to do this, but I, and I wouldn't mind doing the firearms in a separate motion if somebody objected to them being linked in with the other two. But I do want to see ultimately looking at the firearms dealer locations too. But I'm perfectly fine doing them in two separate motions tonight.
Okay.
But I'd like to reiterate, the current gun shop owners have chosen the areas that would be in the area, you know, that's away from the churches and homes and things, as the places they want to do business and are successfully doing business. So we're not asking them to do anything but what they've decided to do all by themselves.
Right.
And nor are we stopping anybody from coming in. I all, I guess maybe I wouldn't mind them separated, because I would like to do the city survey about the whole issue. But I would prefer not to walk away, to walk away and do nothing about the gun shops. But, but yeah, I'll separate them out, do one on one vote, one on another vote, so we're not linking them together.
Right, right, that's fine. Okay, we've got a motion and a second on the pawn shops and adult use entertainment. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, so the motion passes. Okay, so somebody could make a motion on what they want to do with.
Mr. Russell, you said you had a Singleton version for the gun shops?
Yes.
Would not be tied with the other, but it would have an ordinance. Is there any way to put into that that we also do questions on our City Connect survey about how people feel about the whole topic?
Well, the, what I have prepared for the gun shops is a first reading of an ordinance that looks exactly like the ordinance you've adopted, but it addresses only licensed firearm dealers. And so it took the provisions relating to firearm dealers out of the combined three and put it in its own standalone. It's a first reading, because I anticipated you would not have a unanimous vote and would have to come back. So because it's a first reading, you don't adopt the resolution ordering the study until the ordinance is passed, and that would take the second reading at a later date. So at least, and your next regularly scheduled meeting is in July. So you could make a motion to pass the ordinance, first reading of the ordinance, adopting the interim ordinance on banning new firearm dealers tonight. That would only need a majority vote, but that would be first reading, it would need to come back for a second reading, at which point we'd present the same type of resolution for a study. I don't believe the study resolution needs to change, because it authorizes indirect staff to conduct a study, and we're hearing loud and clear tonight that part of that study would be to survey the community on City Connect.
And just to add to that, and this may seem obvious, but the study can occur, the public input could occur without a moratorium on guns. So your, your moratorium issue on the gun issue is about no new stores could apply to be in Eden Prairie while the moratorium's on, but the, the information gathering could start tomorrow?
Am I correct, with no more, gun sales would not affect Arnesens, it would not affect Gander Mountain, it would not affect Shields?
Correct.
Correct. So all of our current dealers would actually be sitting where they would need to sit in the future? And so this would just prohibit some possible different area that current gun dealers haven't felt was a viable place for them to not be considered.
Correct.
I guess I would be willing to make that motion with your Singleton, the wording I don't have in front of me, to do that if there's a second, as a standalone, not incorporated into the others.
If you'd like me to read what that would be for you having this in front of me, but it's tonight's motion, but it would be approve the first reading of an interim ordinance temporarily prohibiting firearm dealer stores.
That'd be new firearm dealer stores.
That's what the ordinance, yes, the word, yes, the new, yes, that's what the ordinance says.
That depends if I get a second then.
So let me ask the city manager, so you're saying that we don't have to do the moratorium? See, I want to make sure that we continue to find out, to gain more information, so when we do make a decision in the future, we've got what we need at hand. And also, whatever we gather, it's the property also of every resident who wants to see it. And I really think that's an important aspect that we haven't really talked about. So, but, so you're saying we could go and do that research without the moratorium, and the fear would be that somebody might come in to a location that we are not comfortable with at the time, until we have the study completely finished?
That's correct.
There would be quite a significant amount of, of notice that we would know if someone was applying for a location. I mean, it takes a long time to go through the process of making an application for, you know, all of the zoning, all of the conditional use permits, all the different things, and so.
How long does it take? I'm curious. How long could that possibly take?
Well, assuming they were just looking to go into a tenant space that allows retail sales, there wouldn't be any public review, is my understanding.
Oh, well, then I'm going to second your motion. I'm going to second Kathy's motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, the motion passes. So there, there will be a temporary moratorium. We're going to get started on data gathering to find out what our residents really want.
And additional research.
This is only first reading.
So there's, temporary.
We can start the research.
Correct. That's what I wanted to ask.
That's correct.
There's a temp, after publication of the first ordinance that you passed, there's a temporary ban on new adult use entertainment and pawn shops, and you've ordered the study. With respect to the firearm dealer stores, you've passed a first reading of that ordinance, it needs a second reading, either at, at your next regularly scheduled council meeting, it could be earlier, but I don't see you scheduling a special meeting.
Good. All right, and there's no reason, just because we passed this ordinance, if we, I mean, we're passing a moratorium on the two and the, and the gun shops, we can put the gun shop issue being higher priority, get our research done more quickly, and we could possibly end up lifting that moratorium, couldn't we?
Yes, the, the moratorium language is limited to 12 months, and it has language specifically referencing that it can be lifted earlier if the council so desires. In addition, sometimes it happens that a use wants to come into the community that is not an issue that drove the moratorium, the location, for instance, in this situation, and the council can, at that point, remove the moratorium from that particular area of the city as well.
Ah, okay.
That's good.
So if, if we could get community research done quickly, let's talk about that and just see what, I mean, we can't wait for a city survey process, but could we, we might need to appropriate money, but could we do a fairly quick one-question phone survey or a couple question? But if we could get that research, my, my, my question really is, could we decide that a 500 feet away from churches and schools ordinance makes sense? That leaves lot, we saw that map, it leaves lots of places around the city that a gun shop could go into, but it keeps it away a certain distance from churches and schools. If we moved quickly on that, then the moratorium would be pulled, and we would just pass that, that resolution, right?
You, you, yeah, you have all those choices. You could have chosen no moratorium on any of this and passed an ordinance at, at the next meeting, or the meeting after that. So the moratorium's given you time to study, you don't need the full year. So that's exactly right.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I would very much encourage quick studies so that we can either decide to do something more long-term, or in fact, pull this moratorium. And I definitely want to add, this does not affect any of the fine businesses that are in the city, and is exact, they're exactly where they wanted to be. And in the future, in that, those lines, they would still be able to be more of them there, so.
Does this prevent one of the current gun shops from expanding on site? They would simply go through the normal developer agreement kind of planning process, right, and, and expand on site?
Yes, I took out the words "expand" from both, from both of the ordinances that have passed tonight.
Current gun shops could expand within this moratorium still?
Under existing regulations, provided that existing zoning regulations on setback height.
Right, right.
Area coverage.
Okay.
All right. Next item is appointments of students to commissions. Mr. Russell, do you want to start with the first? Mr. Russell, do you want to start with the first motion? Do you have it available?
Absolutely. I would move to appoint to the Conservation Commission Govend Makaram, Ria Sharma, and Troy Johnson.
Sherry?
Yes, I move to appoint the Flying Cloud Airport Advisory Commission Rahul Bhavzar, Charles Bjurling, and Lucas Lorenz.
I'd move to appoint to the Heritage Preservation Commission Joe Peszek and Sidney Lewis.
I move to appoint to the Human Rights and Diversity Commission Meghana Shamata, Nikita Dar, Braden Ross, Nicole Mayer, and Shreya Anand.
I move to appoint to the Parks, Recreation, and Natural Resources Commission Carson Gertaler, John Hilton, Tatum Gunderson, Anya Vigesna, and Niall Timmerman.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
The motion passes. Thank you to all those students for their applications. Kathy Nelson, Councilmember Nelson, you had a report.
Yes, I would like to ask city staff to look into restating our open podium so that Eden Prairie residents have first choice to be on for time before outside of Eden Prairie residents, and we get that information when they call in.
I think that's a great idea. This is the second meeting where it's been a problem.
Yes, it has, and I don't want to exclude somebody from Eden Prairie for speaking just because somebody from some other city, or some other state, or whatever, wants to come in and talk at length to us. So I don't know if you need to have a new rule for the next meeting for us, or how we exactly change this policy, but I would like to change it to make it Eden Prairie first.
So a quick clarification, we do prefer Eden Prairie residents. I think the people, I could be wrong, I thought, I thought, everybody that signed up and spoke, that was signed up was an Eden Prairie resident. So the non-residents were those that came up after the scheduled speakers. So I think, as the mayor said later on, who isn't Eden Prairie resident? I think you cleared that up, but...
But it was after Councilmember Nelson pointed it out with a note to me, and I will do a better job.
Was there one of the scheduled speakers was not Eden Prairie? Okay, because one of the first...
You know, I have some question whether we should be letting people from outside of the city come to speak at that time at all. But I certainly don't want them to have somebody in the audience who might have had something to say who lived here, instead of having several people from outside that weren't necessarily speaking to the point of what was being discussed later, so...
And so it is our intent that it's Eden Prairie residents, and we'll follow up to screen that even more specifically then, if there was one that wasn't?
And I'll try to remember to make that point before we all...
Absolutely. That is, that is the intent in the plan, and what we would tell non-residents is that they can certainly come to the meeting, and there may be open time after scheduled speakers, which you know your experience is, 90% of our meetings, there is time for unscheduled speakers.
Right, right. Okay, Councilmember Case.
So at the risk of becoming the outlet guy, I want to bring up an outlet issue again. And it keeps, I'm bringing it up for two reasons. One is the specific issues with this outlet, and I want to see if we can get that fixed. And the second is it's raising again this idea that we, I don't feel we have a really good grip on the outlet issue. I don't, I don't feel that we've categorized them really well, and that we know that, okay, this is an outlet that the city mows, that has a volleyball court on it, that, you know, that's a different kind of an outlet in terms of comparing to just an outlet that has just conservation use on it, and they're all trees. So, over in Sand Hill and Village Woods Drive, there's an outlet. It's a good, I don't know, acre and a half, two acres, mowed by the city, has three formal entrances with carcinite markers designating the entrances into the outlet. The outlet is surrounded by, I don't know, 20-some homes. It used to be an association outlet, was deeded to the city back, you know, when the association goes away, like 1991. It has the volleyball court, it has a paved patio. But the issue is, it has one entrance mowed to it off of Sand Hill, but the entrance onto Village Woods Drive that would allow all these neighbors to actually have access right down to Red Rock Lake across the street is completely overgrown by trees. So this, this neighbor's called the city several times over the last 10 to 15 years, and the issue is that the two neighbors next to all the overgrown tree area aren't necessarily probably crazy right now about opening that up. And also, there's grading issues, and you can't really mow it. But here's, here's my suggestion on that, on this particular issue, is just cut the branches back to make it passable. Because we have talked for years, Nancy, you and I, since '94, about connecting neighborhoods. Now we've got a connection that we've completely allowed to close off, and neighbors are coming to us asking for opening it back up, the ones that want access down to Red Rock Lake. So all I'm suggesting on that, just trim the branches back, just so it's walkable. We don't have to put mulch down, we don't have to mow it, we don't have to do anything, just make it so it's passable. Okay, the bigger issue with outlets is, do we clearly have a categorical system that says this outlet is, you know, one of 30 that we don't even want? I mean, it's just all trees, let's try to sell it back to neighbors, get it off the city, but we can't even access it. There's no pathways to it except through private property. Okay, that's one kind. And then we've got this other kind that has all these trails into it, we mow it. Are we going to maintain it? There's all kinds of intrusion onto this, so we've made a decision as a council not to allow that, but in this case, we are. It's fine, I mean, whatever, it's fine, I guess, except that it is, in essence, a city park, I mean, it really is. It's used now, because it has access to it from all these three different angles. So is that a different category? And if so, what does that mean for how we're going to maintain it? Are we going to keep these trails open? I just feel like these outlet issues keep arising, because we just don't have any consistent categorical policy that can lead us or guide us. So that's a separate issue, take it offline, we'll spend another something on it. But the immediate issue is, I think this trail ought to be opened up. There's probably six neighbors that would like that. The one neighbor that might be impacted the most, because it's their trees that would be cut, there's a "for sale" sign out front. So I mean, I think this is a time, a good time to open up that, that trail and pathway. And I've talked to Rick and I think Jay, and I think, well, I think Rick's talked to Jay, and I think you all know where it is, and I'm just proposing that. But then the larger issue's for another day.
Question for Mr. Lotthammer, has the Park and Rec and Natural Resources Commission or Committee looked at an overall policy on these outlets? Because we have the potential to inherit a lot of outlets.
It's really only happened a couple of times in history. Sterling Park, Sterling Field, that was one that the developer came in and was, a long time ago, intending for that to be part of the neighborhood association and part of their common space, whatever they would have put there. Maybe it would have been a volleyball court, there was already a ball field there. That's one example. This is another example that, as Mr. Case mentioned, back in the 90s, it, actually, the association went defunct. Mr. Marble, who lived, there's about eight houses that surround this, Mr. Marble had actually been maintaining it himself, and in fact, the neighbors tell me that when they moved in, the association or the developer actually didn't grade it, left piles, they, some of them took it upon themselves to create this area. Through tax forfeiture, it came as city property. In 2006, it came before the Parks Commission to look at a common entrance, and there is a flat entrance that is mowed, that is, was at that time. They talked about a couple other potential areas, and when they looked at it, they said this is the entrance to that area. There's really two ways to enter it. You can enter it through that area, or for those people that live on it, you can enter it through your backyard. There's about eight people that live there. I've been out there with Mr. Neal, I've been out there with Mr. Getcho, we've looked at that access. Ms. Wettler would, would say that because there are two signs there, that that means it's an access. Those are actually property boundary corners. They aren't signaling that, that that's an access. At the area between the two homes that she would prefer, there is another one, because she believes that if there is one next to her, it's fair that there should be one next to somebody else. There's a very large cottonwood tree, as Mr. Case had indicated, there are some grading issues. As we've been out there to take a look at, can you just snake through there somehow? There's an arborvitae hedge on one of the properties, and our forestry staff believes that, and there's a large grade issue of where that, and that area is of finger of parkland to where the neighbor's yard is, and so these trees go up pretty high. If these were your trees and your shrubs, you would say that they were decimated, and the amount of work that we would have to do to get, to get them trimmed, we're suspecting they wouldn't live much longer than that. We did have, at the Parks Commission meeting just about a year ago, where Ms. Wettler came forward, a couple other neighbors on each side of the other property came forward and were very strongly against that, referring back to the decision of 2006. And so then we communicated back with her that we didn't believe that it was a benefit or that it was such a detriment to the pathway, or what would be that strip of land in between two people, to clear that out. She wanted to be able to take her canoe there and, and go directly across and directly through. She had a neighbor that said, please take it through the other side of my house, I'm fine with this, where it's flat land. They tried, even at our Parks Commission meeting, they tried to kind of work together as best as they could, but she continued to ask the Parks Commission to make a decision. The Parks Commission was unanimous in saying that there is one entrance, and that due to the impact that it would make on the other two homes, specifically the trees and the shrubs, that they didn't feel it was appropriate to move forward with the clearing.
The path that she wants cleared, is it of a grade or a quality that we would ever use that as an access point to any of our other parks?
We, you know, due to ADA and safety issues, we would not call that a dedicated path, we would not advertise that as a path. Could somebody view it as sort of a deer trail that they could cut through? Certainly, people do there now. There's also one, another area where the parkland touches a city street on a cul-de-sac, again, a narrow strip as it goes through the pond. I'm sure kids cut through there from time to time, I'm sure kids cut through, but for us to clear that in a way, as she has been requesting, for her to be able to take a canoe, carry it through, that is something...
That'd be major cutting.
It would be quite a bit of cutting, and...
So my, question for Mr. Russell then, legally, if we make an attempt to dedicate this or call it a path and encourage use, and it's not very safe, that doesn't seem like it would make, be a wise thing for us to do.
No, if Mr. Lotthammer is saying that it is not ADA capable of being compliant, you'd be in violation of those regulations.
Okay.
But, you know, and if I could take just 60 seconds to set some expectations, set the timer. There are some outlets that you own outright. The outlet we acquired on the consent agenda tonight, we're going to own that outright. You can sell it, this one you don't want to sell, because it's part of your park now, and there's no restrictions on that. Outlets that have been dedicated on a plat, you can't sell. You can divest yourself of it, but it goes back to the grandeur of the plat, not the surrounding neighbors. There are outlets acquired through tax forfeiture. Those come with a deed that they have to be used for the specific purpose for which you acquired it. If you don't use it for that purpose, it goes back to the state of Minnesota. Some outlets come with deed restrictions in them, in the deed, use for a park. If you don't use it for a park, it goes back to the person who gave you the deed or their heirs. So there are, it's not as easy as just giving them back or trying to give them to neighbors, but it, to categorize them and determine which ones you can is a good idea.
Mr. Case.
Okay, so I have great respect for our city staff. I appreciate the fact that the planning, I mean, the Park and Rec Commission voted, I'm not sure if they went out, did they actually all go out to look at it? If they did, great, but either way, that's okay, just a sec, don't, let me finish. You're ready. But whether, whether they did or not, so I've gone out twice, I went out yesterday again. The ADA piece, I'm not sure I fully understand, because we have trails that wind down into Starling Lake Park that aren't ADA. I mean, this is just arguably a trail that's into an outlet, there's another flat one that goes in, so I don't, I don't know that the ADA argument fits here. We have to make every trail throughout our Big Woods area down in the Richard T. Anderson ADA accessible, and that's impossible, so... But the park itself inside is ADA accessible because of the other route. The thing that's frustrating me a little bit is that I feel like council now and then actually directs staff to listen to us, and I don't feel, in some ways, that this is an example of an issue where we really have said for 20 years, we want our neighborhoods connected. We just want people to be, in fact, there's so many neighborhoods where we developed them, and we're like, oh, if only we had forced a, you know, a 10-foot pathway that connects this neighborhood, so kids can walk from this neighborhood to this neighborhood. We have it in this case. In fact, this not only connects three neighborhoods, it connects Red Rock Lake. I walked all the way down there, which by the way, isn't ADA either, it's quite steep, and it's a paved trail, but it goes steeply down to Red Rock, and it's a really beautiful area where the public can access. But this neighborhood back here can't because of some branches. And I looked at, and I love trees, I cut trees all the time, not a big deal to cut these trees. Would not kill them, would not hurt them, you can trim it, and the trail itself is a little bit slanted like that, but not dangerously. You wouldn't have to mulch it, it's fine the way it is. And it just allows people to get from this neighborhood, actually, there's three pathways that could connect from this neighborhood to that neighborhood, to that neighborhood down to Red Rock Lake. That's exactly what we've been saying for 20 years. We have it right now, and we're not, we're not basically acting on it. And that's my frustration, it's not a big deal just to trim this trail up and allow people to pull a kayak down to Red Rock and be able to walk through here. There, there are carcinite markers right now marking it, it's about 10 to 12 feet wide. Basically, what we're saying is, we're allowing intrusion onto city property here, but, oh by golly, we're not going to allow it over here, all these other places. We are here, and so I would just say, you know, just trim this up. That's all I'm suggesting, and if you all don't want to, that's fine, but I would say let's go walk it or go out there. I think you'd be surprised how it's, it makes sense. So, my opinion.
Well, I'll certainly go out and take a look at it. I guess I, it's a little bit different from connecting, like, the way we try to connect our parks into communities, because this was dictated by something that was done there as part of the development, correct? It wasn't done by the planners in, in City Hall and the Park and Rec Commission?
Does connect neighborhoods, but I get you...
But it does connect neighborhoods. I'm just thinking of, like, where I live, our whole road kind of parallels Starling Lake Parkway, and if somebody wanted to bring a canoe down, I certainly wouldn't mind if they went through our yard with their canoe. But I don't expect the city to have a path between our houses to allow those people to do so. They can walk down the sidewalk or down the street to get to the park.
Unless there could have been a path from Starling Lane, where, in fact, I think Congressman Eric Paulson likes to walk through this, he has permission, I think, to walk through these two yards to get down to Starling Lake Park. It would have been wonderful back in the 60s or 70s to have had a trail that would have connected two to three neighborhoods back in there. We can't do that now. Now people have to walk through private yards. But in this case, Sand Hill to Village Woods, we, we have a public, city-owned opening that people can walk right through.
I'm willing to go and take a look at it and see if it...
Okay, let's do that, and then I'll bring it back up after a few people get the chance to take a peek at it. I'll walk with you, I'll go meet you there, anybody here's...
I'd be happy to look at it, too.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, maybe, maybe to sum it up, Councilmember Case, I think in email, there's been a few emails over the year, last year or two, from Mrs. Wettler wanting to, you know, for lack of a better term, appeal the planning or the Park Commission's decision to you as a city council, or just to hopefully get a different outcome than what's happened at the two Park Commission meetings over the last 10 years. So however you direct us, that's how we can absolutely follow up, so...
Thank you. Thanks for the listening, everybody.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.